Here.
Phil Crowe.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to stand and recite the Blood of Allegiance.
My Blood of Allegiance is the blood of America, and I date from America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We were all emailed the minutes of the September fifteenth meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. At the last meeting, we had ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twelve, which was for the two thousand sixteen budget. We passed that on two readings. It's up for third and final reading unless we have any questions. No questions. We can entertain a motion to proceed with ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twelve.
So moved.
Make a motion to place ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twelve in its third reading by short title.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash twelve, ordinance for resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
Make a motion that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twelve be passed on its third reading.
Second.
Motion is second. I will call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Phil Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullkin.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen dash twelve is adopted. Also at the last meeting, we had ordinance two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, which was a zoning map change. It was passed on first two readings. So we can entertain a motion to place that in third reading, third and final reading.
Make a motion to place ordinance two thousand fifteen dash thirteen in its third reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen dash thirteen, short title, an ordinance meaning the zoning map of the city of Decatur, Indiana is incorporated into chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand fifteen to reflect the general re-zoning of real property within previously zoned B one, B two, and B three zoning classifications to C one, C two, and C three zoning classifications.
Move for ordinance two thousand fifteen dash thirteen to be adopted.
Second. Motion is second. I will call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Phil Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullkin.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes. Ordinance two thousand fifteen dash thirteen is adopted. I publicized that we were going to have another ordinance, which was for the surety bond. Checked with Phyllis later. I'm a little premature on that, so that will be coming up at the next meeting on October the twentieth. There's some information Phyllis has to compile before we can pass that. Another ordinance is for promotion for economic development and... I lost it.
Tourism.
Tourism. That's it. So...
Just one. Yeah. Is this... What's the next number on this?
I think it's fourteen.
Is it fourteen?
Fourteen. Well, ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, promotion of tourism, it's up for first and second reading.
Make a motion to place ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen in its first reading by short title.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes the promotion of economic development and tourism within the city of Decatur, Indiana pursuant to IC thirty-six dash one dash three and IC thirty-six dash seven dash two dash seven.
Move for ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen to be passed in its first reading.
Second.
Motion is second. I will call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Phil Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullkin.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes. Move that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen be placed in its second reading by short title.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes the promotion of economic development and tourism within the city of Decatur, Indiana pursuant to IC thirty-six dash one dash three and IC thirty-six dash seven dash two dash seven.
Move that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen be passed on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. I will call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Phil Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullkin.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes. Move that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen be tabled until our October twentieth meeting for passage at that time.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. We have one more ordinance, ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen, which is salary ordinance, which we, by law, have to do every year. Basically, this will show a two percent increase to all salaries and wages that the current employees have. So that's what it is, is salary ordinance, and it's two thousand fifteen dash fifteen.
Make a motion to place ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen in its first reading by short title.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Do you have it, Phyllis?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash fifteen, short title, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the city of Decatur, Indiana for the year two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion, ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen be passed on its first reading.
Second. Motion is second. I will call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Phil Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullkin.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes. Move that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen be placed in its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash fifteen, short title, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the city of Decatur, Indiana for the year two thousand sixteen.
Move that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen be passed on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. I will call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Phil Crowe.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fullkin.
Yes.
Ken Meyer.
Yes. And move that ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fifteen be tabled until our next meeting on October twentieth for passage at that time.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you. I think that's all the ordinances we have tonight. I would like to announce, we will be seeking insurance quotes for property casualty insurance from insurance companies, so we'll get that and I'll report back to you how many interested parties we have. But we will be seeking quotes for property casualty insurance that the city currently has. Next item, our first meeting in November is November the third, which is election night. In prior years, we've left it alone, still have the meeting that night, and we've also changed it to a different night. So a lot of you guys are running for reelection, so I'm going to leave it up to you. It doesn't matter to me. We've done it before. When we've changed the meeting, we went from Tuesday to Monday, which would be November second, with the same time. But that's just a suggestion of whatever you guys want to do.
Are you available Monday, man?
Sure.
I would prefer to change it to Monday.
Monday, November second?
Likewise.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to make...
I make that motion Monday, November second.
Same time.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Californian street closings. I apologize, I didn't bring those closings with me, but I can tell you they're the same as it's been for the last ten years. So we do need approval to close those streets. I think the parade is on October...
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, which is a Monday night. So move...
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you.
They have a great group of volunteers.
Yeah, it could be a nice parade this year. They have some interesting entries this year, so...
As is the crowd.
Fire Department. Fire Department is requesting closing the street tomorrow. Is that right, Last Spank? Close the street for October the seventh from four to nine, roughly. They have an open house at the fire station. You got a couple interesting... You guys explain what you're doing.
Well, typically, you know, just open house, people get a chance to look at the equipment in the station, and we do have this year really kind of a special program. It's Jeff Owens. He's a retired firefighter from Wayne Township, Indianapolis, and he's bringing... It's called the Casey Program, which is two black labors that are just awesome. And they do all the things that the kids should be learning, stop, drop, and roll, crawl low in the smoke. And the labs do all this as part of Jeff's program. So, you know, it should be very entertaining, five o'clock and six-thirty are Jeff's Casey Programs, two shows, and we'll have the typical, you know, hot dogs, chips, cookies, green punch, bring your kids.
Good.
So it'll... It should be a fun night.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions for Last on that? But we do need actual motion to be able to close the street on tomorrow, October the seventh. So move...
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you. I sent out an email to everybody. Our downtown, Decatur Downtown Plan, we hired Christie Sturz to proceed with that plan. She's having it almost finished. We need to have it finished for Kevin Biggs, who's applying for Indiana Housing Program, and it has to be done by November second. Well, she doesn't have it quite ready. Our next meeting is November twentieth, or October twentieth. She won't have it done by then, but she'll have a draft. And I think it's important that we give the public and you council people an idea to look at. Also, Decatur Main Street needs to look at it. So our next meeting is October twentieth. She won't have it done for then. She could come and give a presentation on it on October twentieth, and then we would have to have a special meeting. I guess that's what I'm leading up to, is maybe have a special meeting on October the twenty-sixth. Now, that is parade night, so we'd have to have it early in the evening or late in the afternoon, I would think, if you want to have it that day. But if Christie comes on the twentieth and gives a presentation, she probably wouldn't have to come to the twenty-sixth meeting. One time she should be here to give us that meeting, so... Which one do you prefer? We could have her come on the twentieth, make the presentation, then we could set up a special meeting for any day after that. I just want to give the people time to look at it. We just don't rush it through. The other thing is, it has to be done by November second to assist Kevin Biggs in his housing application to the Indiana Housing Authority. All making sense to you?
Can we meet the twenty-second or third?
Well, I... She's going to give us the draft on the twentieth. I don't know if it's twenty-second, twenty-third. Might not be enough time to actually have the public have a chance to review it, you guys, the city council, review it. So I'd say the following week. We wouldn't have to do it on the twenty-sixth. We could do it on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and I would recommend maybe we do it at like five o'clock. It's a special meeting, one item only on the agenda, so...
I would prefer something more like the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, that's fine. So Christie could come on the twentieth, make the presentation, give us the draft copy...
Give a week.
And then give it a week on the twenty-seventh. That way, we're avoiding the parade night, which gets a little hectic for everybody.
And I'd prefer like time.
Twenty-seventh? Okay. What time? Kenny, I know you work out of town, you're in camp. You guys are out of town, so is five o'clock too early? Would that be okay? We'll have a special meeting on the twenty-seventh to address the Decatur Downtown Plan.
Great.
All right. At five o'clock here at City Hall, and we'll have to make a... Post that meeting, Phil?
Forty-eight hours before. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we should do that.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Dan Ricker, if he could come up, please. This is an award. A couple of our people went to American Waterworks Association meeting. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah.
And Bill Carpenter was presented an award. It surprised everybody, and I'll let Dan kind of go through that.
Basically, the American Waterworks Association has their fall meetings in September, and the Northeast District met at Parpy Field, and Bill was awarded, it's called the Prime Mover Award. It's... The purpose of this award is to recognize outstanding utility men and women in small communities who through their efforts provide a service to their customers by providing a safe water supply. Bill has thirty-eight years here. Let me read what the word says. It says, "Service requires responsibility, therefore let it be known that the recipient has demonstrated outstanding individual responsibility to the community as a moving force behind utility service to provide a safe and audible water supply." And this is a statewide award. It wasn't just Northeast District. This is a statewide award that Bill was giving.
Yeah. So it's kind of nice. I think Dan suggested that Bill attend this conference. He wasn't even going to go until...
Yeah, it's kind of funny because he was busy that weekend. I got him, then he went and didn't know it, and then Jim Inske was there and invited to give him the award out. So actually, like, three days prior, Bill wasn't even going to go.
It's good. We ought to compliment those guys for receiving recognition for a job well done, so... Good. Great. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Mary Byers Montgomery here gave me an event application, and it's for a social event at the North Adams Arts Council, which is located in the old police station on Third Street. Well, they'd like to have a... They'd like to have an event on October the tenth. That's kind of iffy, not sure about the date. Is that correct, Mary?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. So anyhow, it would be held on at five-twenty-one South Third... North Third, excuse me, not South. North Third, and it's for the North Adams Arts Council. What it is, is they're going to get painting lessons, and they're going to have a carry-in, including wine, by the participants. And so the theme of it is, "Let's Paint." So really, we need to give approval for them to have this event. So move...
Second.
Any questions on that event? Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Also, Mary, Mary's been in charge of our art display out in the lobby here. If you go out and look, she changes this the first of every month. It's like clockwork. The first of every month it's changed. The old one comes down, and new ones come up. This month is the Saint Joe Art Class from Saint Joe School. So really, some unique items out there, so... Before you leave tonight, please go out and look. It's really neat what these kids can do. Also, Melissa Norby here has taken charge of the... With Decatur Main Street, the Founder's Park. If you notice, the flowers are out of the circles and things. There's some straw bales there now, and pumpkins furnished by the Belmont Art School.
Little art school.
Yeah. Really, really unique. You give some time, go over, look. There's some good stuff out there. Really, really nice, so...
We had some great volunteer work. By County Services had volunteered to remove the flowers out of the circles. Mark Belmont, his family donated all the straw bales. Chad Hummer with the Farmer's Market went to purchase at cost at the auction all the pumpkins so he'd get a better price. The Belmont Art Students painted all the pumpkins, and they placed them out there today. The street department helped us get the park ready with orange bulbs in the lamps, so a lot of good community work to make the park ready for fall.
Really good. Thank you, Melissa. Good job. We are going to have a town hall meeting on October twenty-first at Riverside Center. October twenty-first, Riverside Center, from six o'clock to eight o'clock. Cam, maybe you want to expound upon what we're going to be talking about, Dan?
Well, obviously, we had our debrief from the state team regarding Stellar a couple weeks ago, and we wanted to get back to the community, and basically, yeah, I gave an update on that, but more so talk about how we're moving forward. We also want to make sure we invite all of those who have generously contributed to our Decapal campaign. We want to show them how their dollars are going to be spent over the next couple of years. And we're also... There'll be Mr. John Sampson from the Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership, and there's a much bigger story to this, but some of our projects have been included in the Regional Cities Initiative, which was just pitched to Indiana Economic Development today down in Indianapolis. But Mr. Sampson will be on hand just to speak about how important what we are doing is for the region, and how it aligns with the regional initiatives. And that's really just kind of giving some more clarity and explaining some of the timeline constraints that we're up against, what things we're going to proceed with, how we go after some of these opportunities outside of Stellar. And that's really the whole purpose of the meeting.
So October twenty-first at Riverside Center from six o'clock to eight o'clock. At a special Board of Works meeting, we had to acquire any interest in the Old City Hall, and we did have some interest in that. I'm going to turn it over to Tim Baker to explain what transpired.
Anyone that was interested in the Old City Hall had until noon of last... One of the days last week to submit any offers regarding that building. One offer was submitted. It was submitted by PIP, and it was for fifty-seven thousand six hundred, which I believe was the average of the two appraisals. The modifications...
Just clarify, I think that's ninety percent of the...
Which was ninety percent... I'm sorry, ninety percent of the average of the two appraisals, but the prior application or offer that had been submitted by PIP included two provisions that were removed from their offer that was submitted. The first was, they were requiring previously an inspection at the city's expense, an environmental inspection. That was removed and taken out of their subsequent offer. Likewise, they had included provisions for additional parking. That was also removed. So the offer was reviewed by the Board of Works, and the Board of Works accepted the offer. We're in the process now, as I understand, PIP has, at their own expense, had the building expected. They're waiting for the report. Once they get that back, they will then make a decision whether they intend to borrow funds to purchase the property, or whether they're just going to pay cash for it. In the meantime, we've done the title work on it. We're ready to go as far as the completion of the closing, once the buyer's ready to go as well. The timeframe for closing is, I think, the earlier of October twenty-ninth, or three days after funding approval and document preparation by the bank. So that's moving forward, and that should be completed here, I'm guessing, sometime within the next month.
Any questions on that issue? We have some miscellaneous things still in the building that we need to get out of there, so we'll be doing that here in the next couple of weeks. Luckily, we have some records down there that really are confidential, so we're going to have them...
Shred it.
Shred it. That's the word I wanted. Anyhow, we asked Kenny Kessler, our prior police chief, to come in, and he took charge of that project for Phyllis, and he's getting it done, so... Also, I'd like to announce that we have selected a new police officer. Mike Mahan and Greg Cook, they took applications. I think we have thirty-one applications. They narrowed it down to five. We interviewed five individuals for the position, and Teddy Betheson, did I say it right? Was selected. So Mike, we'll get ahold of him and see when he's available to start his position and go through a whole paperwork. We have to have this approved by Perf down in Indianapolis, and then we also have to get him within the next year down to the Police Academy. But is Teddy Betheson...
Yep.
Oof, I'm getting better at it. That's a tough word, so anyhow, so just want to announce that he has been selected. Department head reports. Mike, anything you want to report?
Nothing more for me. Thank you.
Beth?
What's happening?
Me? Jeremy?
On October sixteenth, the daily yard waste collection will come to a stop.
That's a Friday.
That's a week from...
A week from this Friday. Okay.
On the nineteenth, we will start full force on the leaf collection. So basically, just winding down the projects. We have a lot of things to put down. Still a few little minor repairs here and there to do, some sewer work, some auto work, and stuff like that. Then all becoming a closed here over the next four or five weeks, we'll get everything matched and get that all back in before the plant's closed up.
Just to clarify, when you say leaf collection starts on October nineteenth, people can put their grass clippings and stuff out on the street, is that correct, with their leaves?
Starting the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, right. And then...
Probably discourage it, maybe. Putting out the materials beforehand because we don't pick the loose material up until the leaf collection starts because it's a little separate.
Yeah.
Collection process.
And is that leaf collection, is that based upon the day of your pickup of trash, or is it just random?
No, no, because several years ago, we bought the second leaf machine, so we're around frequently. Before, years ago, we only had one machine. We tried to cover it with the whole city. It was pretty well based on your trash day. Now have the two machines where this were pretty well made.
Yeah.
Walk through these neighborhoods.
Good.
Get them out as quick as you can when the time comes, and we'll get them picked up promptly.
Good. And, and I give you... Mr. Carbock? Dan?
Hello?
Nate? Nothing. Melissa? Melissa? Melissa attended, you're gonna have to get up, Melissa attended a Regional Cities Initiative, which is a regional initiative that involves 11 counties in Northeast Indiana, and you probably read about it in the legislature, legislature approved 82 million, 84 million dollars for different regions around the state, well, they're gonna award that to two different regions, so, one region's gonna get 42 million, another region's gonna get 42 million, Melissa went today to Indianapolis with the Northeast Indiana Group, which we're part of, and represented Decatur and Adams County, to give our presentation to the State Economic Development Group, who is gonna make the selection of who is awarded this money, so, I don't know, just briefly, if you can tell us what went on.
The Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership, their presentation to the state today was very well done, again, the Regional Cities Initiative is, they're gonna award 82 million dollars, 42 each awarded region, our region has already applied to the IEBC, today was the site visit presentation that was given, and it's in 11 county region, Decatur and Adams County has four projects that are part of the application to the state, so, we will know late November, early December, definitely before the end of the year, our region will be awarded.
Good, good, thank you for attending that, Harvey.
Melissa, is there a timeline then after the awarding that has to be done, like on Stellar work?
This is a brand-new program, and we're not really sure what the timeline will be, what the award is made, I'm sure we'll be filled in about what the timeline is to receive those funds, and then how can communities start applying for and having projects ready to apply for and receive those funds.
If you go to Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership website, they have the whole website set up for the Regional Cities proposal, it'll, there's video out there, it outlines the different projects that have been included in our proposal through Northeast Indiana Regional, our region, but it's always, it's about the exact same things, it's quality of life, it's attracting retained talent, you've probably heard of this Road to a Million, and that's what Northeast Indiana is kind of the big goal, is attracting and retaining talent, to get, you know, additional, or a million people here.
Population to a million.
Yeah. And that's all a part of it.
And when they went through and kind of vetted the various projects within the 11 counties, a lot of that also had to do with project readiness, did not, so, you know, the fact that we had for the last two years been going through the Stellar process, really probably put us in a stronger position to submit some of our projects, and we were fortunate to have a number of those actually included, so, it's an indirect benefit of going through that process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Did I miss any department heads, I hope not.
Commissary City Council members.
I was out in my district, couple people had problems with potholes on their roads, is that something they just contact the city about, or how does that get taken care of, or, I know it's probably a big issue, but I'm new, so.
Can you call?
Yeah, 724-3356, Jeremy's office, yeah, you gotta get on that list, so don't be afraid to call, otherwise you'll never get on the list.
You'll get calls from people outside your district, too.
Yeah, you'll get calls from people outside the city.
I think we got, we had to point out the fact that came out in the-
Oh, yeah, yeah, good, good point.
I don't know how, who makes these decisions, or how they make them, but I think it's a testament to the fact that we have been kind of moving and shaking, and our name's getting out there, because Realtor.com, top 10 affordable small towns where you actually want to live, number two, Decatur, Indiana, that's nationwide.
That's nationwide, number two in the nation.
So the fact that-
That's amazing.
You know, and again, how do they do this, who decides, you know, don't really know, but the fact is, our name is out there, and people are taking notes, they're following, they're seeing that there's things going on, and basically, we're on the map, which is, I think, very exciting.
Yeah, it is, it is, so, we're definitely gonna get that posted on our website, we'll be, we'll get it with the chamber, and whoever else we can tell our story to, so, that's great news. Anybody else, comments from the public?
The most part, the new lights you put on 7th Street, well received by all the natives down there.
Good.
We got a few people that can't sleep at night.
Close their eyes.
Yeah. It really screws up the street in a new light.
Looks nice.
Good, yeah, looks nice. Good, good. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, it's been a nice cultural fall attraction, I think, but I wonder if we're getting close to the end of the 13th Street Orange Barrel corn maze.
Every day we're a little closer, I'm not sure when closure is, but we're getting closer.
I'm sure.
Into this month, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Into October, it kind of falls in, the orange falls in with Calathumpian and Halloween.
You're about to draw a little pumpkin.
Does anybody else on the public have any, Larry?
I've watched some wild committee, could never have much to say, but speaking from the Park Department, the president of the Park for the city of Decatur, and we have an ordinance for a rule, ruling that on park grounds, we do not allow alcohol, and I was wondering what more happens our council wants to do, if you should maybe make a special exception to that, because you're supposed to have a happy-
Wine. Well, I think by passing the event and okaying the event, we just okayed it, so, we gave special approval. And we've done that, let me clarify, we've done that for the sculpture tour, they have a wine tent, you know, they've had it for the last two years, and so, we've approved that in the past, too, it's not, this isn't the first time we've done that.
Well, it kind of raises an issue that we need to further sort out, but that is, that six acre tract is used for multiple city purposes, you have a water tower, you have a park, you have an old building that's now being used by the Arts Council, so, and we were fortunate at least to find a deed to the city, but, you know, at some point, we probably ought to parcel it up a little bit and get it in the hands of the parties that are actually using it, because I'm sure that the water department expects that they have control over where their tower is, and the park department would expect that they have control over their park, so, that's something that we probably should look into.
Okay, we could do that, we could do that. Anybody else? Hey, Tim, you have anything else you want to bring up? Phyllis?
Just to make the publication a matter of record for the charge for the demo of the concrete that has been published.
Oh, this is the onus we pass for demolition materials that the city will take in, we need to make the legal notice a matter of record.
So move.
All right, motion second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, thank you, Phyllis. Yeah, just contact the street department so you can tell them about how much you're bringing in, and they'll charge you for it, yeah, it's a good service, because it's difficult to get rid of broken concrete anywhere.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, great motion. We paid the claims.
Thank you.
Motion to pay the claims, second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Now a motion to adjourn.
Motion second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you, everyone.